I don't know, I suppose it's kind of like that area by Brandon. It's just wines and hills.
Tony said he's ready to go, so you can start whenever you'd like.
Good evening. I call the order this regular meeting of the Minnehaha County Planning Commission, and I'll begin with a few introductory comments. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, please make sure that all cell phones are turned off. Please note that tonight's Planning Commission meeting will be rebroadcast via CityLink and posted on the www minnehaha county.org site for viewing by the general public. Any action taken on the conditional use permit applications tonight will take effect five working days following this meeting unless a written appeal of the Planning Commission's decision is filed in the planning office by Monday, August 2nd at 5:00 p.m. In the event of an appeal, the decision will be referred to the County Commission for a hearing on Tuesday, August 17th at or after 9:00 a.m. The affected parties will be notified of the meeting date. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room. Action taken on the rezoning applications during the public hearing tonight are a recommendation that will be forwarded to the County Commission for another public hearing on Tuesday, August 17th at or after 9:00 a.m. Meetings of the County Commission are held in this same room, and the decision of the County Commission will be final. First on the agenda is public input. Is there anyone here tonight that wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? At this time, the Planning Commission will consider the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are perceived to be non-controversial and meet all of the requirements of the codes and regulations. The consent agenda will be acted on in one motion with no public hearing on the items unless a member of the public, the commission, or staff requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. The minutes from the June 28th meeting are included in the consent agenda. Does any Planning Commission member wish to have an item removed for discussion? Next, I will read each item on the consent agenda and ask if there are any issues or comments from the staff or the audience. If any member of the staff or the audience would like to be heard on any item, please raise your hand, and the item will be moved to the regular agenda to allow you to address the commission later in the meeting. Any items remaining on the consent agenda will be approved by the Planning Commission with the conditions recommended by staff. Item number one is approval of our minutes of June 28th. Item number two is conditional use permit 21-53 to exceed 3,600 square feet of accessory building space requesting 6,392 square feet on the property legally described as track 13 Indian Hills Estates. It's the north half. 8-101-48 Split Rock Township. The petitioner is Zach Porter. The property owner is Don Bonenberger. That is at 2216 North Indian Hills Trail. It's about two miles southwest of Brandon. Item number three is conditional use permit 21-54 to transfer one building eligibility from track one, Simon's Ma addition in lot two, the southwest quarter, 1810348. That is Edison Township. To track one, Lathrop addition, southeast quarter, 1310349 Severdrup Township. The petitioner is Bennett Lathrop. He's also the property owner. This is located five miles southeast of Baltic. Item number four is a rezoning, 21-02 to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to I1 Industrial District on the property legally described as the BGM addition, the south half, 3410247, and the north half, 0310147, lot four, in Red Rock Township. Petitioner is Victor Shusik, and he's also the property owner. This is located about an eighth of a mile west of the intersection of County Highway 138 and 488th Avenue. That's north of Valley Springs. Item number five is conditional use permit 21-55 to make one building eligibility available on the property legally described as the west half, the southwest quarter. There's an exception, Bundy's addition, 1810350. That's Lyons Township. Petitioner is Terry Bundy. Property owner is the same. That's one mile west of Lyons. Item number six is conditional use permit 21-51 to allow a public utility facility.
That's regular agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, I didn't see any hand raised for any items one through five. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve items one through five.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second for the consent agenda for items number one through five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. If any of those items are for any of you here, you are free to go. We'll move on to the regular agenda. Item number six. Permit 21-51 to allow a public utility facility. That's a water tower on the property legally described as Water Tower Edition, number two, southwest quarter, 510252 Humboldt Township. It's the Minnehaha Community Water Corp. That's a half mile southeast of Humboldt. Scott?
So, yes, Scott Anderson, Planning Director, and you have a conditional use permit request in front of you, 2151, to allow a water tower. This is southeast of Humboldt. There is an existing water tower there, and on the site plan, you can see they are requesting to build another water tower. It'll be 180 feet tall. It'll contain 250,000 gallons of water, and the new water tower will be 40 feet taller than the other water tower, and this will help with water pressure. In the staff report, it indicated it's going to be a composite style, and that, I've learned, was not correct. That was my error. It will be a metal, it'll be a metal, all metal. It'll look similar to what is there. So, they will start this fall, and they will finish approximately a year. It'll be painted blue, and there'll be a logo on it that'll say "Quality on Tap." There is some conditional use permit criteria to review, and we look at what effect this might have on the enjoyment of other properties in the area and the uses in the area. There are some agricultural uses in the area, and there's a couple of residences that are not all that close, approximately half a mile away to the east. And this should have very little effect on those residences and those uses. Next, we look at will this affect normal and orderly growth? And it should not negatively impact it, and actually, it may aid in providing adequate water to this, to the area and adequate to, and water pressure. So, next, we look at are there utilities there? And there is a, there is a utility road. There's, you can see on the site plan, there's a gravel road that leads right up to the property, and there is already a water tower there. So, there are no, there are no utilities or roads that need to be constructed to provide service to this site. The fourth item that we look at is parking requirements, and the zoning ordinance really doesn't specify the number of parking spaces, but we are requiring two off-street parking spaces for their staff when they are there testing the water or monitoring the water tower will be able to park at. Next is, we look at is there going to be any odor, fumes, dust, noise, or vibrations? And this use should not really generate any of that. There should be no noise or no, there shouldn't be any vibrations, dust. You can see it's relatively benign once it's built. They indicated that staff is there approximately once a month to monitor the water tower and do any testing that might need to be done. Finally, we look at the, the health and safety and general welfare of the public and the comprehensive plan, and this fits in with the proposed comprehensive plan. It provides critical infrastructure for the community and is an expansion of a very important utility within the community. Staff is recommending approval based on all of the findings. We are recommending approval of the conditional use permit 2151 to allow the water tower with five conditions, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you have. I can show you the pictures. The, you know, this is looking back towards Humboldt, and this is, you can see the interstate. They keep it mowed. There, this is the driveway up off of the county road. To the north, there's a slough, a lake, and some farm fields, but, so, that's what it looks like. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Jeff?
So, is there a new tower going to lean like that?
I was, I was, it was really windy that day, so when I, when I was taking the picture, you can see the trees moving.
Any other questions for him? Is the petitioner here?
Yes.
Would you please come forward and state your name and address?
Commissars, my name is Scott Bus. I'm Executive Director with Minnehaha Community Water. We are adding a water tower at that location to help with delivery of water to the town of Humboldt and also the, the growth in the dairies and agriculture in that area. We are planning on making it a little bit taller than the existing one so that we can increase the pressures in that area and be willing to answer any questions that you might have.
Jeff?
Are you going to keep the old water tower?
We will, we're looking at the possibility of selling it to the big dairy that's south of town. We approached the city of Humboldt to see if they wanted to buy it. I think they're going down their own path and building their own water tower, but I think it will, we've given, we've started initial discussions with the dairy.
Great.
Any other questions for him? I guess not at this time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? Commissioners?
Madam Chair, if I may, I understand that it really is an improvement for the community. Understanding too that there's already a water tower here, whether it replaces it or, you know, is in conjunction with it. I guess to me, to me, it's kind of a no-brainer to approve, so with that said, I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve, to approve the conditional use permit 21-51. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, conditional use permit 21-52 to allow a public utility facility, a water tower on the property legally described as MCWC Track One addition, the south half, the northwest quarter, 510148 Split Rock Township. Once again, it's the Minnehaha Community Water Corp. That property owner, it's about three-fourths of a mile southwest of Brandon. It's along Six Mile Road.
Yes.
Scott?
Exactly. Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is also a conditional use permit by Minnehaha Community Water, and they are requesting another water tower. This one is 152 feet tall, and it will hold more water, 750,000 gallons. This one is being constructed, as I indicated, is going to be a composite style with a concrete, a concrete with the pedestal and then a painted steel bowl, and there will be a lock, all the, the ladders and whatnot will be inside, and there'll be a locked door. So, they're also using basically the same timeline. They'll be starting this fall, and it will take approximately one year to complete. You can see that there is a mixture of, as I indicated in my staff report, there is a mixture of uses. There, there's a lot of agricultural uses, some farm fields to the north and to the east, but you can see across the street, there's two residences, and directly to the south there's a residence, and then there's approximately 10 residences along that Cali, East Cali place, and you can sort of see them at the very bottom of the screen of the picture that is in front of you. Once again, this is a critical infrastructure that will be providing water to a growing community. This part of, of the county is, is always growing, and this will help provide the services needed for that growth. We look at the same criteria. There will be no dust or noise. We are requiring fencing to go around this site to secure the facility with a six-foot chain link fence. With that in mind, we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit with the six conditions, and I'd be glad to answer any questions. We can, I'll show you the pictures I've taken. So, this is looking off to the east. You can see Brandon and Corson sort of in the distance there. This is at the site, and this is looking at the property, the house across the, across Six Mile Road to the west. This is looking straight north on Six Mile Road, and this is looking south. You can see the, this is the house that is directly to the south of, of the, of the proposed water tower site, and, but basically, this is the, the site of the water tower, and it'll be sitting on that, what is now planted in field. So, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Scott? I guess not at this time. Is the petitioner here? Will you please come forward and state your name and address?
Commissars, my name is Scott Bus, Executive Director of Minnehaha Community Water. We're planning on putting a water tower there. This is probably one of the largest use areas in the county in the southeast part of the area, east of Sioux Falls and south of Brandon. This will help us take advantage of our Lewis and Clark million gallon allocation that we are starting to receive now down on Six Mile Road and 41st Street. What we found was that our existing tower that's a mile to the west is no longer big enough to support the growth in the area, and the lines to the existing tower are too small and are going to be in the way of development. So, that's why we chose to go with a new water tower. Part of the criteria that led to the selection of this site was that it is at an elevation that matches what we need for the system. The pressure within the system is dictated by how tall the water tower is and the high water level within the tower. And it's also close proximity to our 12-inch line that delivers water from Sioux Falls and then eventually ends up at Eros Data Center. So, it's a main corridor through the county for, for water transmission. What we found with the engineering study was that every, every foot that we lost in elevation costs us $10,000, so that's why we ended up picking a site on the hill and trying to work with the Odie family to get it in a place where they didn't have to farm around it.
Any other questions for him? Jeff?
Isn't your existing water tower at a higher elevation than this, though, as far as the land?
It may be, that I don't know without looking at the map.
It seems to me I've read that those, that whole area is the highest area of the Minnehaha County.
It would end up that the, the high water level within the tanks would be the same. I'm not sure what the elevation is, but that difference would be made up in the height of the tanks.
Any other questions for him? Not at this time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Darren Tilly. I live at 3103 North Six Mile Road. I live in one of the residences right across the street, the one just to the west and to the, a little bit north. I'd like to read a prepared statement that I typed up today to help me get through it quicker. I fully understand and appreciate MCWC's need for a new water tower. As a degreed mechanical engineer, I also understand the design considerations for placing the tower on as high of elevation as possible within their service area. However, it appears the placement of this water tower was decided solely on property elevation with no apparent regard given to its effect on the surrounding properties. I built my home in 2009 on our family acreage for the views that we have to the east. Our sightlines to the east from the property would be severely negatively impacted by the tower's proposed location. I do not want our sightlines ruined for myself or my family for the next 30 to 40 years. I had a phone conversation in early June with Commissioner Barth to understand my options to oppose the tower's location. I spoke with Scott Bus from Minnehaha County Community Water Corp. on June 16th to try and work with MCWC on a revised location that would still fulfill their need for a new tower while minimizing the impact to the three residences directly around it. Scott indicated to me that MCWC was not interested in discussing different options for the tower's location. I proposed to Scott then, and I propose today that the tower be shifted to the south, about 360 feet, which would locate it to the south of the 3,000 North Six Mile Road Odie property. That's the residence directly to the south of it. This would locate the tower across the road from our pasture and set up directly across from our residence. This would not impede on our views to the east and would be much further away from the other affected properties as well. MCWC will state they do not want the tower located there due to a loss of ground elevation. Per their site survey conducted as part of the project, there is a drop of nine feet in elevation between the two sites. This equates less to, less than four pounds of pressure loss within the system. Shifting the tower to the south will shorten the 16-inch PVC water main piping feeding the tower by approximately 360 feet. Due to the COVID pandemic, PVC piping costs have risen by over 375% in the past six months. Shifting the tower would save approximately $50,000 in piping costs. Furthermore, a location to the south would not require a new driveway approach to be constructed as a field approach already exists that could be reworked and utilized. I estimate this would save an additional $10,000 in dirt work that would be required to regrade the ditch across from my residence for their proposed driveway. If the four PSI in pressure that would be lost is that critical, I would think the $60,000 in cost saved, as I have detailed, would help offset the cost for either increasing the tower's height or regrading of the new site to gain the necessary elevation they desire. Either of these options could easily still be done without negatively impacting the three residences directly around the tower's proposed location. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for him? Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that cares to speak to this item? Please state your name and address.
My name is Leslie Duncan, and I'm at 3,000 North Six Mile Road. We're the adjacent landowners. And our house has been there about 32 years. My dad, when he and Ray, when my dad retired off the farm, they built that acreage. And the whole north and east side of the house is all windows, and you saw the pictures that they showed at first, that it's a beautiful view of the valley and, excuse me, of the Brandon area. And a six-foot fence would cut that right off for us because our windows are deep in our house. They're probably 18 inches up from the floor, so we have tall windows. And when I did exchange a few emails with the Minnehaha County Water, probably about a year or so, or so ago, they had indicated that if Ray would not sell any more land for acreages, they would not put a fence up, but now it sounds like the fence is going to be mandatory, and I would just ask your consideration for our existing home.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Monte Albertson, 2901 North Six Mile Road. This is not right across the road from me, but I suppose 200 yards. And water towers are not pretty. They're ugly, and I feel bad for the neighborhood. It's also, it's going to hurt property values. I mean, who's going to want to be there and lose that view? And there's some good views over there. I would think it's, it's going to be moved further back inland into the land. I know it's close to that, that water line, but there's got to be a way to get some water to that. Or do a new water line to where the existing water tower is over on, on Maple. That water tower's already there, has access, has a, that line, I would think, would be able to be brought down to Six Mile Road and put that water tower right where the old water tower was, is what the recommendation would be.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this item? Will the petitioner please come forward again? Is there any other options that, that it can be moved?
What we talked about was to, with, with a six-foot fence, in order to try to keep it from affecting the view of the house to the south was to wrap it back in so that it would be out of their sight line. Even though it would be a fence around the water tower, it wouldn't necessarily be on the property line so that in that southeast corner, they would still have their view out their windows. You know, we, we looked at all the different options in that area. We looked at putting it where the other, the other water tower is. That lot is, is not usable because it has a, a concrete pillar foundation under the old water tower that couldn't be used for the new water tower, and that site is already less than an acre. And I believe that even splitting the south property like Darren talked about, that would leave both parcels under an acre, which I think is targeted by county rules. We looked at a number of different, you know, a number of different options, and this is what we came up with that, that made the most sense and was the most cost efficient. Darren talked about moving it to the south. That nine feet basically ends up costing us $80,000 or $90,000 that we have to make up in the height of the water tower to match the same elevation.
Any of the rest, do you have any questions for him?
How tall is this water tower going to be?
This one, I believe, is 152, is that?
So, the one by Humboldt is 180?
Yes.
Any other questions for him? Madam Chair? Becky?
So, if it were to the north, how much elevation is lost?
To the north, the difficulty we had with that is that it drops off pretty significantly from the top of Six Mile Road Hill down to where Rice Street ties in, and that became an issue with the Odies having to, basically to farm around it, and they weren't willing to sell us along there. The other, the other option, or not the option, but the difficulty we ran into was that we had a heck of a time getting a driveway permit from the county because it is Six Mile Road, and they initially weren't going to give us a driveway. What we ended up coming up with was a driveway that's to the north that shares a field approach with the Odies, that we're going to widen that driveway so that they can get their farm equipment in there, and we can get access to the tower the one time a month that we're in there. And, and then it also addresses the site issues that the County Roads Department had.
Anyone else have any comments? I guess not at this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience care to speak to this item? I'm going to close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Jeff?
You know, change is going to happen. Our county is going to be three hundred thousand more people by the time I push daisies. And I know that out in Virginia where I live, there were some beautiful homes with windows the size of this wall overlooking the Pentagon on top of a hill. And down in the flat, they built, you know, eighteen-story apartment buildings, maybe taller than that. And the, the people with the view sued and the judge ruled that they owned their land, but they didn't own their view. And I just mentioned that because I sure do appreciate the view. I also, though, know that there are people living next door to these water towers all over the place. And they're not the steel girder type things that, you know, that didn't even have roofs on them back in the day. They are much more advanced. That said, I certainly appreciate the concerns of the neighbors, especially the ones that have been there this lengthy period of time.
Any other comments, Commissioners?
I think they need coffee.
I'll let her take a motion.
Motion to approve item seven, conditional use permit twenty-one fifty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to, to approve conditional use permit twenty-one dash fifty-two. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Three to two.
Motion passes. Item number eight, conditional use permit twenty-one dash fifty-six to allow an agricultural operation that's a lime wholesale on the property legally described as a south half, the southwest quarter. There is an exception, H dash one, and Gekie's addition, three, one oh two forty-nine. It's the Mapleton Township. Petitors, Mark Gekie, he's also the property owner. This is a half mile north of Renner. Kevin?
Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department again. As you read there, this is a conditional use permit to allow an agricultural operation. I'll begin by noting that this request or this petition began as a result of code enforcement action on the property where several neighbors called the planning department about dozens of trucks traveling by and dumping lime on the property. The agricultural-related operation is described as something which stores dry, or excuse me. Yeah, this operation is described as an operation that stores, dries, and transports agricultural lime on the property. And the agricultural operation in the ordinance is described as allowing the handling, storage, and shipping of farm products allowed as, as a conditional use permit. I also bring up this time that in the conditional use permit heading, staff originally wrote that there's going to be wholesale out of this location, and that was incorrect by staff, that the petitioner is not necessarily selling it out of this location, but he is distributing it out of this location. And maybe we can get some more information from the petitioner about his business model when he comes up. But as far as the lime, the petitioner is, is requesting to stockpile lime, which is a byproduct of water softening treatment for the city of Sioux Falls. Stockpiling it in this location in windrows will allow time to dry for easier spreading on agricultural fields. As a treatment, the lime reduces the hard water. And lime is also used as an insect and rodent repellent and other methods, so it should not be attracting any sort of insects or rodents. As an agricultural product, it's also, it's used to decrease the acidity of the soils to increase the nutrient uptake by plants. You can see on this map here, the subject property is located approximately a mile north of the Renner Corner. I'll bring up the site plan here. And the driveway to the, the drop-off or the stockpiling location is about a half mile east of the highway on two hundred and fifty-seventh street. The narrative describes the operation hours as seven AM to five thirty PM during the normal, it's kind of summer months. And then during the fall and harvest, when there's more activity, the times can expand out to six thirty AM to seven PM. On the site plan, which is kind of difficult to read on the screen, it shows that there is, the working area is on the east property line. There's approximately four hundred and seventy feet north of the right-of-way line or a hundred and sixty-five feet south of the Cedar Ridge Place property. And go back here, you can see it's, it's right next to Cedar Ridge development there. Staff suggests that the setback be similar distance from both properties in the north and the south site. So that a hundred and sixty-five feet from the north also be located, setback be required for the south property. You can see that there is a house in the southeast corner of the property, or to the southeast of the corner. Planning staff did contact Don Oshlogger of Mapleton Township. The township does have concerns about the many trucks and the, the possible damage to the road, in which case the township would recommend that a haul road agreement be a part of the approved permit. So that haul road agreement is part, one of the conditions of the permit. Staff recommended commission, conditions. For the conditional use permit criteria, the first criteria is the, to review the effect upon the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses already permitted and upon property values in the immediate vicinity. This is a large agricultural property. It is surrounded by other agricultural properties as well as approximately twenty residential properties. And you can, not all of them have been developed yet. The stockpiling is some distance away from these properties. And there's a setback the staff recommends of a hundred and sixty-five feet. The height of the stockpile can be, staff recommends it be maximum of six feet tall to reduce sightline concerns of higher elevation. Truck traffic from the site would likely increase along that half mile. The added increase should, should be applied to that haul road agreement as well as staff recommends having dust control on the road as well. And that dust control be applied during the heavy traffic seasons. The second criteria, the effect upon normal and orderly development and improvement of surrounding vacant properties using the property predominant in the area. The, the uses of this, the use of this property compared to the, the future, it's going to be very similar. It's going to be residential uses around ag uses. And the effect is going to be very similar in what is proposed. Staff would recommend that the site be limited to the five acres requested that is shown on the provided site plan. That way, the site doesn't grow any further from where it's at for future growth, to know that it's there. Number three, that utilities, access roads, drainage, and other necessary facilities are provided. There is a driveway located there already. We talked about the increased traffic on the long gravel road and the haul road. The drainage on the property is going to remain the same. Because of the large amount of lime there, staff does recommend that there be runoff control, some sort of a berm or settling basin be placed in the property to prevent the lime from reaching waters of the state. And part of their recommendation is that a certified engineer should design the, the berms or the, the feature and supervise the construction. Number four, that off-street parking and loading requirements are met. This property is very large and will not need parking per se. It's going to be delivery and, and loading, unloading. No loading, unloading should be allowed on the street at any time. Number five, that measures are taken to control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, vibration, and lighting, inclusive of lighted signs. We already discussed dust on, earlier. And the stockpile has not shown to have any increased odor, noise, vibration, or lighting as part of the, the, the project or the proposal. Number six, the health, safety, and general welfare of the public in the comprehensive fan, plan. The applicant is proposing to stockpile a byproduct of municipal water treatment. The lime serves a beneficial use for the, treat the water. And now it will be turned into a beneficial agricultural pop, product. The public health, safety, and general welfare are not being negatively affected by the proposed use. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed use with seven conditions. And I can go over some of the photos of the property here. So this is looking from the driveway location to the west toward the highway. And then this is looking the driveway to the east. And you can see the, the residential house just on the north side of the road there. This is looking up the driveway, and you can see the, the tree belt in the residential house for that small acreage there. And then this is the current windrows of, of stockpiled lime on the property. Some more photos of that. And then this would be looking back to the east again. And there's kind of a close-up photo of the lime. And it's kind of clumping nature of, that you can see there in the photo that it clumps together and, yeah. So is there any questions for staff and their recommendation?
Jeff?
I see that you have a recommendation that dust control be completed, but it's not in your conditions.
So the dust control, when I was talking to Don Oshlogger at the township, that was his primary concern too, is that there'd be dust control on the property. So that there's a haul road agreement. Condition number six, a haul road agreement must be obtained.
So that agreement with the township may, the township may require?
Yeah.
Any other questions for him? Not at this time. Is petitioner here? Will you please step forward, state your name and address?
Hello Commissioners, Mark Gekie, nine forty-two East Fourth Canton. I work with the city of Sioux Falls Water Plant on the removal of their lime. And our intent on our farm up there is to reduce the moisture so that more farmers are able to spread their own lime in their own spreaders. And it also reduces the shipping by cutting the water out of the material so it's not half-water. Be happy to answer any questions or?
Jeff, has some questions?
I've honestly not seen it being used, but, so do farmers just spread it, or do they incorporate it? Do they plow it in or?
For the most part, you're best to have it incorporated, but sometimes in the fall, they'll apply it and incorporate it in spring, depending on how late it gets. It's a very fine material. The snow will take it into the soil.
Any other questions for him?
Madam Chair, I got one. I just wondered, how much hauling in and out are they doing a day?
I think we had taken up there maybe thirty loads in a, a day, maybe. The inbound will be the heavier side because of the distance. And then when it's going out, it'll be several less loads per day.
How long does it take to dry out and ship it back out?
Oh, right now, it's probably this type of weather, we could do it in a month.
Okay, any other questions for him? Jeff?
So hauling it in, is it like side dumpers and hauling it out, just regular dump trucks?
No, they're side dumps.
Still side dump? So you have a, like a, what, what loads the side dumpers off-site to bring it, to take it away? Do you have a end loader or whatever?
Yeah, a payloader would use a loader.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions for him? Not at this time.
Okay.
May have you come back. Anyone in the audience care to address this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Mike Dossett. I live on four seven, five five four, two hundred and fifty-seventh street. So I am the property just to the south and east of the site. And I was one of the ones that had called and put in a complaint. Because as of right now, they probably have over a hundred loads of, of that lime out there. And their, their road that comes in to the site is a hundred and forty feet from my house, from my deck, you know. And I witnessed it out of these hundred loads when they're hauling. They are hauling. They're not driving slow. They got their jake brakes on in the field. They're noisy. And the, the field is black dirt. And after so many runs, it's eight inches of black powder out there. And when they come through, it's a cloud of black dust over the top of the trees, onto my deck, everywhere. It's a mess. And I've lived out there since nineteen ninety-nine. We built our house new. And I've, and that road will not hold up in spring and fall for all the extra, it will not. It's, they've struggled to keep it nice the way it is. So if we have any kind of rain, moisture, and just strictly the, the frost coming out of the ground tears the road up. And with that truck, truck traffic, it'll be undrivable for cars. I mean, I can just see it. And I, I don't know, they, they're not, they're not farmers. They're truckers. So to me, it's commercial. Whether they get paid by the farmer to haul it, even though they don't charge them for it, they're getting paid to haul it. So to me, it's a commercial business. They're, they're using it for agricultural people, but they're hauling it as a commercial trucking company. And I just feel it's the wrong place. There's twenty houses around that place right now. There's some extra lots that don't have houses on it. And it's just not the right area for that type of an operation. And then another concern I have is it going to be where they're going to have five, six trucks, a payloader sitting out there every night? Or say they get that lot full, and they can't haul there for a while. Are there going to be loaders and trucks sitting out there for a week, two weeks, a month? Stuff like that. And then, I know I, I talked with one of them one night, and they say it doesn't blow around. And I, and I can believe that when they just dump it and leave it because it is a really wet material. But I've been in the excavation business myself for, worked for an excavation company for six years and in construction. And when they're loading and unloading that stuff, loading it with a loader when it's dry, there's going to be powder everywhere, and that stuff is so fine. And what, the way the wind blows through that area, it'll, it'll blow. That stuff's going to blow. I mean, it's, it's going to happen. And we're going to have that issue as well, blowing all over. So I think it's going to devalue our property by having that there. And we're going to have noise. And right now, they have supposedly five acres, and it's almost full. There's not room for a lot of stuff left. So I mean, is it going to grow? Is it going to be ten acres down the road? Or is it going to be twenty acres down the road? I mean, I'm just concerned that once they start this, it's just going to keep moving. And we don't want it out there. And I'm not opposed to those making money. I'm not that kind of guy. But I just feel it's the wrong location for this product, for this operation. So thank you for hearing me. I appreciate it.
Anybody else care to address this item from the audience? Please step forward, state your name and address.
My name is Matt Starr. I live at 47511 Cedar Ridge Place in Renner. I am a, basically a brand-new tenant over in that Cedar Ridge development area. Like be just north of where they're at, there's a tree line going to break between my house and their lot or their farmland agricultural stuff. I just built my home there, moved in four months ago and had no clue what this was until it was brought to our attention. I don't know if I'd have built my $600,000 house where they're going to bring poop stuff up to my house because it's, I just found out what it is. They haul it from the poop fields at Sioux Falls in the trucks and they come and they drop it off up there. It just doesn't seem like that's a real good plan to have in my backyard of a new development with more stuff going to be sitting there, more homes trying to go in there. And I'm just a brand-new guy. I just got kicked out of my house in Sioux Falls because the Sioux City, Sioux Falls bought us out for their development down there and down by T. And so we had to go looking for land. We found land up by Renner, thought it was going to be a great place to go. We didn't have any issues, we were pretty excited. And four months into it, here we are at a commission meeting. And it's, I just don't think it's the right place to go. I don't need, you know, down in T, we lived on a dirt road. We always had, the roads sucked because semis drive down there, the dump trucks drive down there. The road gets to be a washboard. Everybody says, oh, we're going to take care of it, it's going to be great, don't worry about it. That's a bunch of crap because those trucks come down and ruin it. Then they say they're going to do dust control. They put that weird oily stuff down. Then it rains, it turns into a sludge on your vehicle. You pull into your garage and it drops into your, into your garage. And thankfully, I don't live where the last gentleman spoke, right next to it because I don't live on a dirt road anymore. But that's the stuff that they're going to have to deal with. I'm just going to have to deal with the noise of the trucks and the tractors and the beeping noises all times of day. And I know they say it's going to be done by 5:30, 6 o'clock. We all know that that usually doesn't happen because, you know what, things happen. And we had to work a little later today and all of a sudden now it's eight o'clock at night and they're still out there doing it. And we can't enjoy our peaceful area on the, on Mi'innah County because we've got to listen to tractors and trucks behind me with their engines and all that stuff going on. So I agree with the last gentleman that just spoke. Don't remember his name, but the last gentleman that just spoke that said, you know, it's just not the right location, not the right place. And I've never met the gentleman in the gray shirt, but he doesn't even live there. So it's not like it's going to affect him. He lives in Canton. He said, I listened to the address because we get to give our addresses. So he doesn't even live there. So that doesn't even affect him. He's just owns the property and I'm not sure if he's going to be driving the truck. I guess the last gentleman said they were a commercial company trucking it in. So I don't know if you guys are the truckers driving or not, I don't know. But for them, it doesn't affect them, so it doesn't, they're just looking at the money aspect of it. And I get it. I don't, I think everybody should be able to have a business if they want and make money and do that. Just, there's many other places they can put this thing. And I just would appreciate some consideration and maybe not right where it's at or like Downways or somewhere else if they own some other land, somewhere where it's not close to residential people where we all have to deal with the, deal with the ascent of it when they just come dump, leave, and go. And they go sit in their home somewhere and they don't have to deal with it. So I guess that's my piece. I appreciate the chance to chat. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Randy Clark, 47515 Cedar Ridge Place. My residence is right next door to the last gentleman that just spoke. And like he said, we had just also built a new house and moved in in November of 2020. I really can't add anything else that has been said already, but I just wanted to voice my opinion that I don't want this in my neighborhood just because of property values and all the dust and, and the hardship that other people have to go through, that, that potentially may have to go through with, with this business being there. So thank you for your time.
Anyone else? Please step forward, state your name and address.
My name's Darla Ling. I currently live at 47301 Rogness Place, Renner. And my husband, Dave, and I, we own the property directly to the south of the subject property. We bought that approximately two years ago with the intent, it's just under three or under four acres, building eligibility that checked all the boxes, what we were looking for to build our home. COVID hit, timeline got pushed back. And then this came into play. I work in the real estate industry and I can tell you, property values are hugely going to be affected by this. On the universal appraisal form, there is a section that addresses any adverse conditions, whether it be power lines, you know, anything of those sorts, commercial, industrial, anything along those lines that can affect the property that is being valued. And this would have to fall in that criteria. It will, it's an adjacent property. I think it does need to be looked at. Is it an ag use or is it commercial slash industrial? My husband and I both grew up on ag. We both grew up on farms. He was on a dairy farm. I was on crop and small livestock. You know, we know what living in the country is about. And the county representatives, they talked about the controlling of the dust of the road. Mr. Gackey himself, he did state it's a fine material when it dries. So what about controlling the dust of the, the material itself? And what can be, what can be done for that? So thank you.
Anyone else care to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. Chris Rams, 47543-257th Street. So I'm also on the south side of 257, adjacent to the subject property. So we were also one of the complaints that called the county and told them about the situation of the trucks hauling in the lime earlier on and then brought this to this attention. So a couple of things that we've noted about it is items that aren't being addressed is we've already noticed not large amounts, but smaller quantities of spilled material along 257th Street. The condition of the roads, when we built our house in 2001, the frost boils in the roads just from regular vehicle traffic were making them nearly impassable. Don with the township, you know, did his best to try to alleviate that, but even that, we started taking alternate routes coming into our property, which would be same routes that these truck traffic would be using. Another note too is part of the conditional use permit, Gackey's given until July 31st of 2022 to implement best management plans. That would be by an engineer. That's giving him another full year to basically use the property as is, hauling in with no engineering or concerns for stormwater runoff for the first year of his use there. Mark said it himself, it's a very small particle. In our letter to the county, I cited that OSHA states that it's an air tent and can burn your skin. We all discussed how it's going to become airborne, how we've already seen it become airborne. Like they said, what are we going to do with controlling dust of the product itself? Trying to keep that down so it's not airborne, flying over to the adjacent twenty-some homes in the area. Lime can burn skin, it can wreck vehicle paint finishes, it can affect your house siding and trims and burn through as it gets accumulated in the fine dust on the corners of the house or whatever, and then it rains. So that will start to affect the properties in that way too. As Don, one of the neighbors, told me before we bought land in the area and moved in there to build, that Mark has previously applied for a conditional use permit to store lime up here before, and that has been rejected. I just wasn't able to find in my searching how many years ago this was already denied once. So I think that's important to consider. And then also their hours of business out there planning to be trucking. You'll also be, a concern of mine is that the school bus traffic, the kids will be standing at the end of the road with side dumps rolling by them while they're waiting for their school bus in the mornings. But so with this information, I feel also it's not a good place for the storage of the lime. It's being hauled from the city of Sioux Falls. If, whatever the agreement he has with the city, if they can't store it there at the ponds and haul it directly to the sites, I'd like to know if Mr. Gackey has additional properties that could be used that are closer to his own home, his own residence, rather than hauling it up north here and putting it by our residences. Questions for me? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anyone else care to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address.
Hi. Excuse me, my name is Dawn Moore. And I actually live in Houston, 15722 Longville in Houston, Texas. But I am the owner of one of the lots that are, that are across, one of the four lots, one house already has. I don't really have an address, so I can't give you that particular address, but I am right on 257th Street, right across the street. I was not notified about this petition, but luckily a fellow neighbor let me know since I was in town, I was able to, to come tonight and voice my concerns. With it being hours, if hours are given and there's thirty loads a day and there's summer hours and there are fall hours, to me, that means you're in business. That's a business. You have hours and you're going to be hauling, you know, thirty loads in and out every day. That's a business. My biggest concern is this lime dust situation. I've done some research in the last couple of days about it. Like everyone has mentioned, the dust is very fine. The impact on the environment alone, let alone the people and the crops and the animals, I just don't feel like we should be put, there's so much residential out there now across the highway, that's all residential, behind is all residential. Pretty soon, we will all be residential across the street from there. So it'll be residential all around in the middle of a, you know, a lime dust storm possibly. So that's a, that's a huge, a huge concern for, you know, for everyone. And like I said, I feel like if this is a business, this is not, this is not zoned ag, this is a business. It has hours, it has trucks coming in and out, and everyone mentioned the road, and that's huge. That road thing is huge. So all of us that bought our property to build for our retirement, you know, basically will kind of be screwed for lack of a better word. So I appreciate you hearing me out.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward.
Brian Banwell, 47525-257th Street. My acreage is right next to the last lady's and I've, I go out there every night, tending my garden and things and seeing all the dust and most of the dust is just his service road. It's not even off the gravel road. And then when they're turning around dumping and it's all over through that field, so there's all kinds of dust. I'm also worried about the lime dust. And I mean, he's there trying to dry it out, so it's going to dry, you know, get powderized and get blown around because it is very windy out there sometimes. And I just, my biggest thing is worried about the property devaluation and what if he, if he gets this here, is he going to somewhere down the road put up a refinery and make it twice as bad as what this would even be? So them are my main concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Dan Schamela, 47509-257th Street. I live right on the corner coming off the highway. I guess my concern is pretty much everybody else's. I guess I don't know why our little area up there has to be the brunt of taking care of Sioux Falls' problem to get rid of their waste. And then we got somebody that doesn't even live in our township, let alone our county, that's making money and hauling it up there and dumping it. I just, I just think it's a really poor place for it, should be disallowed. And hopefully if it doesn't pass, you guys make him clean up what he's got up there already. There's over a hundred loads you dive up there between every row of lime. It's weeds that he won't take care of. His, his dirt road going into the field is going to be a horrible mess. So I just, I'm against it and hopefully you guys reject it.
Anyone else in the audience? Care to speak to this item? Please step forward, state your name and address before I close the floor.
My name is Leon Swenson. We live at 47569-257th Street. Our property is just close to the house that's on the east side of this property. We've lived here for, in this area for over fifty years. I agree with everything that every single person that's been up here has said. We're not right across the road, but we have to travel that road and we know what happens with that road. They've had to repair that seriously because we have problems with underground water in some of those places. So also, I sincerely believe that this activity will seriously deteriorate the valuation of all of our properties having this there. So for that reason and whatever the rest of these folks have said, I would ask that you reject this request.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close the floor?
Ma'am Chair, the proponent, I want to bring him back.
Oh, sir, a petition, will you please come forward? Somebody has some questions for you.
Listening to the concerns of the neighbors, can you speak to any of those issues? Do you leave vehicles parked there overnight? Do you?
If there would be anything, it would be a payloader temporarily, but the trucks would not be there. And it would only be the period that we're moving the lime out. As far as the road goes, when the frost and that's going out, we won't even be on the road at that time. Conditions will be dry before we can even do anything. And it is not the human waste. It's a material from the water plant.
Any other questions for him?
Do you respond to any other issues that they brought up? Do you have dust blowing around from the lime or is it just dust from your driveway? I was out there today and that driveway was powdered black dirt.
And we are going to be watering that down, the driveway.
It's just dirt though. It's just dirt, a dirt driveway.
Right, yeah.
I guess I have a question. Is there any other location that you can be doing this other than where you're at right now?
I was just using my property for it. I talked to the, the water plant on it and they didn't have an area that I could use. And I figured it was my farm in an agricultural district. And if I remember right, when my son was going to build up there, if he was going to, he had a sign. if he was going to, he had a sign, a form that stated something to the fact that agricultural use is what that area is.
Any petition, or commissioners, any other questions for him? Guess not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Close the floor. Commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Jeff.
You know, there's a lot that can be said about this and, you know, almost every project that people object to should be built somewhere else. It's a great project, should be somewhere else, not here. And, you know, you could open Adam's bait shop and people would complain about the traffic, you know, pickup trucks going there all times of day trying to get bait. And agriculture is a heavy industry. It's not a light industry. It's heavy industry. If you move next to a oil refinery, you would understand that. But in effect, whether it's a cornfield or fertilizer plant, it's heavy industry. And I think you know that those combines drive day and night. They're making noise, they're raising dust. It's part of life out in the country. And I certainly think that there are some good issues that are brought here. But I was out there today and I didn't see any dust coming off the lime. In fact, it was pretty solid. I gave it a kick and it crumbled, but it wasn't blowing around. I didn't see it on the leaves of the corn. I do have a concern about this being a transitional area with the Cedar Ridge development and stuff going on there. And, you know, I'll also say that people complain about their property values, no matter what also. I mean, if you, if you want to raise cattle, if you want to raise pigs, it's going to ruin somebody's property value in their opinion. But when you strike oil, no one cares that they're now extremely wealthy. It's not a museum out there. It's an ag area. And that said, I do think that while we should grant this to continue, we should have a time limit. I know that when we have, in the past, approved gravel extraction, extraction, we've put, you know, like a 10-year extraction limit like over by Goose RV in the Hartford area. And I think maybe what we should do here is, because I think that there will be, there'll probably be a McDonald's built there and you'll love that, I know, traffic lights, action. But I think we should maybe put a time limit on this and give the applicant who's doing a service for the ag community a chance to transition to another location. Anyway, you guys talk to me now.
How long were you thinking, Jeff? What was your timeframe?
I was thinking five to 10. I think we did the gravel extraction for 10 years and after the Supreme Court ruled on it, two years later, we extended that for two more years for Merle and Roy's.
Would you consider that to be another condition?
Yeah.
Okay.
But on the other hand, I'm, I want to listen to the wisdom of my fellows here.
Any comments? Adam?
If I was to do anything, I would think the dust control going into the field would be my biggest concern, I guess, with the neighbor right next door. I understand what he's, where he's coming from with the dust coming off the field as dry as it's been. And that gets to be really fine powder. To me, you almost have to have it kind of gravelled or something, a harder surface, I guess.
I noticed when I was out on 257th Street that off and on it had been treated. And so there'd be 150 yards of, you know, treated gravel. And then there'd be a spot where even my little pickup was spreading some dust. But I didn't see any of that lime dust on any of the corn leaves. And I think, you know, if they were selling tractors and combines and stuff there, that's ag related too. If they were selling anhydrous ammonia, that would be ag related too. And, you know, all of these things have consequences. But, you know, we all drink water and we have to have water towers. We all drive cars and we have to have oil wells and refineries. And, you know, a lot of things go into it. So I think I asked Kevin about the conditional use criteria. And in, under the first item here, it talks about staff recommends dust control could be completed in a manner approved by Mapleton Township. So that if they get an agreement with Mapleton, they would have to, Mapleton would have to hold them up for some dust control, I would think.
Something. Mapleton Township, the Hall Road Agreement is, is only going to be able to be applied to 257th. If you want to have dust control along that property, that house to the east, then you're going to need to put that in a specific condition because Mapleton Township is not going to be able to regulate that off, off the street.
And that it was absolutely fine black powder. I was afraid to drop a match on it in case, you know, blow up. So Scott, what would be the condition we would add for their personal driveway there?
Well, I think, I think you have a couple of options. I think maybe Ryan had indicated, or maybe it was Adam about if he wanted to have some kind of gravel surface and then have that dust controlled. I would, I don't know how long, I don't know the distance, but you can sort of see that little corner parcel. Maybe it would be appropriate to have it gravelled 50 feet north of the, of that property line. So when they get onto it, it's not that powdery black and that they do mag, you know, they do some kind of dust control suppressant like magnesium chloride on that portion of their driveway that is coming off of 257th. But that's one option for you to consider.
I guess my opinion would be take it all the way up in there to where they turn around. And if I was to do that.
Kevin, you've been out there. How far would you say that is on the, on the dusty road? 100 yards?
Well, the depth of the whole property is a quarter mile, so it'd be 1,320 feet.
Right, but I'm thinking about to the turnaround where.
If we go, so, and the turnaround's probably half that. So 600 feet would be about the distance before they get to the property, or to where they turn around.
I'm no engineer, but Adam, you're a township official, so you know all about this.
Yeah. It'd be some money, but I think it'd be worth it to do it for the neighbor's sake, I guess, and, and put the chloride on there to keep the dust control down. I sure won't, I guess my opinion is just don't wet the dirt down and bring that back on the road, I guess, is what I'm saying.
That's true also. Yeah, we don't want to drag mud.
I don't want to do that. I'd rather have a gravel, gravel harder surface going in there with a may chloride on it or something and not drag any mud out on the road. I guess that's just my opinion.
Well, it's possible. So what's the verbiage?
I'd say, I guess I don't know how, have harder surface road, or I mean gravelled, a gravelled surface to drive on all the way up to the turnaround up in there. And put may chloride on it or dust control suppressant on it.
You're proposing condition number eight?
Turnaround on the gravel and back off.
No, 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 turnaround up in the field there.
But all on gravel.
Yeah.
So condition number eight would be to place gravel and dust suppression, suppression up to the turnaround.
Yeah.
That's eight. What about a time limit for operating here? Like I said, I believe just another half mile north, the Peterson Trailer Park is being dismantled and going to be replaced with stick-built homes. So, you know, as this area transitions and McDonald's is not impossible, change is going to happen and this may not fit with, with things if we allowed it to be grandfathered in like Hewset's racetrack, it may not fit going forward.
What kind of time limit you thinking, Jeff?
Well, I'm kind of trying to make someone else have an opinion.
I guess my opinion was five years, but I'd like to hear what other people have, I guess.
I was thinking more like eight, but.
You're thinking eight?
Because I'm fine with five. I mean, if we're going to place a timeline, I don't think there's any reason he can't come back in five years and assess where he's at and practices that have been put in place. But Kevin, I have one question for you while you're up there. I'm five, we're really giving him a year to get, you know, everything put in place. Was he already operational there? Was there a reasons or statute that gives him that year? What was the thought behind that July 22?
My thought was, there's a lot of very busy contractors out there and the reality is, is it's, we can move that date up closer, I guess, and make it this, this fall maybe. But for trying to get that accomplished in this timeline at this point from working with other contractors, it may be difficult.
So Mike, I'm not sure that that stuff erodes very easily because Ryan, isn't it true that cattle producers use piles of lime for their cattle to lay on and stuff? Because it stays solid?
Yeah.
So. Go ahead, Becky.
Go ahead, Becky.
Mine is a little bit different topic, so I'll just kind of wait.
What do you think about a time limit?
Five years.
Five years. So that would be condition number nine.
I'm just trying to do the math in my head. The petitioner indicated, you know, up to 30 trucks a day. But it sounds like the neighbors have indicated the area is already pretty full. Well, 30 trucks a day and they said there was 100 loads in there, that's three days. So I'm trying to think about the safety thing and putting together in my mind just how many days there will be that kind of truck traffic. And my guess is it's going to be busy for the few days while it's being hauled in. And then it's going to sit for a month or six weeks, depending on the weather, to dry out. And then there'll be some busy days again to haul it out and then rehaul in. Am I understanding kind of this correctly? I should have asked while the petitioner was here. I'm sorry.
The petitioner gave a nod there. Becky, to your point though also, think about the loads of soybeans and corn going through there. I mean, there's, there's going to be gravity bins and semis and large equipment. Those township roads are built for the purpose of agriculture. That's why we have, South Minnehaw County has such a great ag county. It's not well-known, but we're like number five in the state for ag income. And because we have great roads and a farmed market is, is why these township roads exist. So have we agreed on item number nine for five years? And does there need to be an item 10? Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve 20, conditional use permit 21-56 with nine conditions, including number eight to add gravel on their personal dusty road and to have a time limit of five years for the whole operation.
I have a question for clar, for your clarification. It was gravel and you wanted dust control on that 600 feet, right?
Yes, sorry.
Just want to make sure that we're all on board that it's 600 feet or that's, and dust control.
Is there a second?
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and second to approve conditional use permit 21-56. Any further discussion? That has with listed all the conditions that are there and that's one through nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Scott, any old business?
Tuesday, we had the appeal of that Stockwell condition, KFO conditional use permit. And then it was the planning, sorry, county commission upheld the, your decision. So that's an item of old business. And then an item of new business, if I could jump right ahead to that. Just to reiterate what I told the city, we will be next month having our public hearing on medical cannabis as dispensaries, where they're going to be located and a definition for them. So just letting you know that's coming ahead.
Do we try any of the medicine before the meeting?
No.
Thanks, Scott. Do you need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.